Kues. Harris.
Brennan.
Carlson.
Here.
Kuiper.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Seabertson. Zingy.
Here.
Now, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Communications. We already got a budget update or overview, update number one. I guess Carl wanted to say more. We got some information on the water. And I think that's it. Anybody persons to be heard? I didn't have anybody on the list, but does anybody here to speak to the council today? Seeing that, we shall move into our new business proposed 2015 Catch Can Public Utilities operating in capital budget. There is a motion, I believe, on a piece of paper here. Somebody would make that. We can get started.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved resolution number fourteen dash twenty-five seventy-three, adopting the budget for the year 2015 and appropriating from the Catch Can Public Utilities Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2015.
Second. Moved and seconded. To get started, Carl, do you want to do an overview?
I can, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Above and beyond the concerns outlined in the transmittal letter, which I believe provides very comprehensive and realistic overview of the issues facing the city council, I would offer the following in terms of draft spending plan that is before you. Revenues, particularly those of the water and electric divisions, are not keeping pace with increased operating cost, ongoing and necessary capital investment, and increased debt service. The proposed spending plan only confirms the result of the cost of service studies that have been presented to and reviewed by the city council over the last several years, but have yet to be fully acted upon. Seventy-eight percent of the proposed capital budget is funded from reserves, and that's a trend that is simply not sustainable. Given an aging and deteriorating infrastructure, utility rates need to be set to provide for ongoing and sufficient reinvestment into the three operating utilities. Failure to do so will simply lead to more emergency fixes down the road at a more costly price. The average net income for the telecommunications division between nineteen ninety-two and two thousand and six was approximately $1.8 million. GCI entered the local marketplace in the spring of two thousand and seven. Between two thousand and seven and two thousand and thirteen, the average annual net income of the telecommunications division decreased to approximately $950,000. While decreased federal universal support and the diminished profitability of telecom were forecast at the time GCI came into the marketplace, the council and community have yet to come to terms with the fact that the electric and water divisions could no longer rely on subsidies from telecom to balance their budgets. The long-term reality is that these two divisions must become self-sufficient. I would note that the draft spending plan does not address what staff believes will be a minimum of a two to three million dollar investment that will be necessary to comply with the pending ADEC compliance order by consent regarding water treatment issues. An undetermined level of funding will have to be set aside. That will be required to implement a new IVEW collective bargaining agreement. KPU will have to deal with an unknown cost of operating the Whitman Lake hydroelectric project under the auspices of the SEPA true-up agreement. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I would note that the draft KPU budget for two thousand and fifteen is approximately $2.6 million less than the two thousand and fourteen adopted budget. This was only achieved by significant reductions in what staff believes to be necessary capital investment, while still calling for rate increases to balance the budget. Although the council can spend its efforts trying to identify further reductions in expenditures to mitigate rate increases in the short term, such an approach will not solve the long-term problem. The cost of service of the three operating utilities has to be recognized and dealt with on a continuing basis. If KPU is to continue serving the community's long-term interest, the electric, telecommunications, and water divisions must become self-sufficient based on a realistic rate structure that addresses not only annual operating costs, but long-term capital investment. Mr. Noel and I have prepared KPU budget update number two, which summarizes these points with supporting documentation. I urge council members to review the material as time permits. It is our belief that the council has reached a crossroads in charting the future course of utility and its ability to serve the community. Thank you.
Then for... Anybody have any questions on that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dave.
Have the other two divisions ever been self-sufficient? A reasonable number.
Water has not been self-sufficient. From time to time, electric has experienced that.
It goes up and down with electric.
And you said seventy percent... Let me make sure I got them. Seventy-eight percent of the capital expenses you're going to come from reserve?
That's correct.
What is a... Do you have... What do you consider to be a reasonable number? Thirty-eight percent? Sixty percent?
Reserve, twenty-five percent of operating. I just wanted to add one thing. I recall comments about the water division being self-supporting. There was a point prior to nineteen ninety where the water division more or less broke even. What happened was we started making some major improvements to the water infrastructure. We did the reservoirs and we started improving some of the water main transmission lines and had to issue debt in order to do that. And when that happened, it started going the other way, and we started losing money on the water division. And then the latest reason why water division started to... It's difficult to balance its budget because of federal state mandate to improve the water quality to full standard.
Okay. Do you guys want to have specific questions? Do you want to start from the beginning, just go through the transmittal letter? Any specific ideas on how you guys would like to do it, other than going through the... I'll just start from the beginning. I have questions for management. Anybody who has any other idea. Carl, in the transmittal, I guess one of the things that I have a question on, and on your estimates on revenue coming from electric, are you guys being really conservative on that? Because I still, you know, I'm... And I don't know, maybe you... I might have saw something in there where you were estimating the revenues to go up eight hundred thousand. You know, SEPA just had a one-point million... $1.2 million more in sales to our three communities ending in June of this year. And so I imagine we're selling more and bringing in more money on the electric. What kind of... I mean, are you guys feeling that in the utility or on the electric side? Bob, maybe you?
The revenue projections are based on a two-year average of KWA sales.
I know. Are we feeling the increase, though, like in this...
Actually, we're seeing a decrease.
How can we see a decrease if we're buying more power from SEPA?
Well, just because we're buying more power from SEPA doesn't necessarily mean that our energy sales are going up. What happens is we have our generation mix, it's a combination of SEPA power, KPU power. And that mix obviously changes, and we may be utilizing less KPU power and purchasing more SEPA power.
When we're buying SEPA power for six-eight, we're selling it for nine-five, aren't we?
That's right.
So we should be seeing some kind of increase, too. I just not smart enough to figure it out, or...
Well, yeah, but there's other... I mean, there's more than just...
Okay, budget's over.
Well, he's class seventy-four, so five years behind us.
I wish it was that simple, but it's not.
Some of our generation as a council aware has been down this year. We were doing the rewinds on the one generator.
Right.
You know, so we weren't producing our own power, which is our cheapest source of power.
Correct.
So when we're not producing that, we're relying more on SEPA generation, and that's why our purchases are up, because we're not using our own resources to generate. We're down for maintenance.
But the cost of power, when we generate it from our own facilities, is under two cents per kilowatt hour.
I understand that. And we sell it for nine-point-five.
Right.
Okay, but it's still, if we're buying more SEPA power, too, we should be making a buck off the extra money where... I mean, extra power we're... Or the power we're buying from. Correct? I mean, that's the way I do my count.
You've got a point there, but there's other costs in addition to, you know, purchased power. I mean, there are transmission costs, there's disreducing costs, there's maintaining costs above and beyond the cost of purchased power.
So what are we projecting our electric revenue, and I know it's in here and I've saw it, between this year and last year? We're proj... I could have sworn we're projecting a higher sale amount in electric coming in, because we have the eight percent increase.
Right now, we're seeing a decrease in energy sales compared to last year, a slight decrease.
So we're buying more power, but we're making... We're getting a decrease in sales?
Again, if we're using less KPU hydro power, then we're purchasing more SEPA power. That can happen even if your total energy sales are not going up.
Okay. I'll try to figure it out. So that, I believe it's eight hundred thousand more we're projecting electric sales, or electric revenue this year than last.
Right.
Could you tell us what page you're on?
Oh, gosh. I went through... I mean, I... Let's look into revenues. I think it's right on the first page, D1.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, my question is, you know, we're not doing the diesel surcharge. So that eight hundred thousand is... Is that all from the increase in eight percent? Or how much is an eight percent increase going to bring us?
Most of it is from the eight percent increase. There is a slight trajectory of increased revenue of KWA sales in twenty-fifteen, but I would say about ninety-five percent of it is due to the rate increase.
So if we don't do the rate increase, we're still coming in around sixteen-point-five million?
Right.
Okay. And then...
There'll be just a little bit more than that, but not much more.
Okay. And I, you know, and I try not... I mean, I've been doing this with you guys for a lot of years, and I don't try to be a pain. And I just, you know, to me, when my revenues come in and my costs come in, you know, I brought in so much money, I spent so much, and that's my final tally. And but these things can confuse me, because then I look at our, you know, DC one, and our funds available, you know, it was estimated ten percent, ten million. Now we're estimated we're going to be in at twelve million at the end of this year. And, you know, I guess, I guess you just budget conservatively, because that keeps... I mean, we just went up to... To start the fourteen-year of this year, not the, I mean, two thousand and fourteen year. It actually was twelve million when we started. You're saying we're going to start this year at eight... I meant eight million. You know, I know it's always higher than what you project, and I'm just wondering if you guys are projecting too conservatively.
We give you our best projections, Mr. Mayor, and they're based on what the departments and divisions give us. If you look at the attachment to budget update number two, those are audited figures. You will see the continued losses of the water division.
I understand water and I, you know...
And the intermittent losses of electric, and for the first time, the loss in telecommunications. So we're on a definite trend, and that's the concern that we're trying to convey to the council.
I understand your concern. I just... I just wonder if you guys are just being too conservative, because I sure can't support an eight percent increase in electric. I'm always up for increases in water, because we're always behind in that. But on the tele... I mean, on the telecommunications side, you know, you have some specific things you guys want to raise. My only questions on... Or not only questions, but some of the questions I have on that is on our, you know, we're looking for new income, and that's through the Verizon... What do you call it? Project for word. Where are we on that? And, you know, we're supposed to be... We're looking at six-figure incomes on that. And I've been told it could happen at the end of the year, it could be at the first of the year. Are we projecting anything like that into our telephone budget?
We are, but you're not only looking at six-figure income, you're looking at six-figure expenses as well. We have yet to deploy voice, that spending, the rollout of data. Ed, it's going to come up. The rollout of data has gone very well. But it's not a...
Sure. So this year, we opened up the fourG LTE system approx coincident with the arrival of the second ship.
Saying again that?
The second ship. So we started roaming data for Verizon customers on May 4th. By the end of this year, we'll have taken in roughly $350,000 in revenue for roaming Verizon data. Next year, all-in, we expect to do about $600,000 in business roaming Verizon data, roaming Verizon voice, and revenue from selling our own voice products. Additionally, if we put a radio up in Skagway with a million tourists all visit, who also visit Catch Can, we think we'll bring in roughly $200,000 to $240,000 in additional roaming data. So there's significant revenue that A would receive this year and B will receive in two thousand and fifteen. When you roll up the entire telecom budget, there are other categories where we see revenue reductions, particularly on the network revenue side as it relates to regulated revenue. Every year, we run all of our projected revenues and expenses through a very complex model. And the model produces an estimate relative to how much regulated revenue we should receive from various off-island funding sources, high-cost support. Off the top of my head, as I recall, those revenues are projected to come in four or five hundred thousand dollars less than they did yet this year. So, yes, we have a great deal more Verizon revenue next year, but we also have less regulated revenue projected to come in from some of the regulated off-island sources. And these things get trued up a year out, so the two thousand and fifteen revenue will be trued up to two thousand and sixteen, so it's always a bit of a...
Do we do that modeling, or do we have somebody else that does that?
No, we have an external firm that does the modeling for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
We started talking about the transmittal letter, and I was questioning on revenues for telecom and electric. I did see one good thing, and that's in two thousand and seventeen, we pay off a bond that's going to save us over a million bucks, which will help profusely, and I just don't want to see us racing into increases over the this year and next year and keep going insane with them. I mean, I don't want this to be a drag on rates. I want to make sure... And maybe we need to make some tough decisions and maybe change some service levels, so... I don't see our customers thriving in tons of money either, since I'm out there and seeing the economy. So I'm willing to look hard and maybe want to change something in the way of service, or... And that might include an employer or two, so more so. I guess that's the way I look at the whole budget document, which isn't a pretty one, but I think we can come to agreement on what we should do, especially between rates and... And maybe looking at some other ideas, but I'm still, you know, I still... You know, I wouldn't even flinch at not even doing electric rate increase and see what that end fund balance is for January one for two thousand and sixteen, so... Anybody else want to ask some questions? Okay. We can go to the summary page, which is C1. And that sort of gives you a look at the revenues, preparations, and totals. And then farther in as you go, it breaks it down.
Your honor.
Yeah.
Back on B11, give me... I'm still in the transmittal here.
Make your time, Bob.
There was a statement here about paying back the general fund. And it says that fifty-six percent of that 1.1 million was to pay back that four million to start the payments on that. And that, figuring out what that would be at sixty-five percent, we're looking at a six-to-seven-year payback on that. What would be happening if we stretch that out to ten or twelve years, kind of bring it in at like three hundred and thirty thousand? How would that affect general government?
We can run those numbers. You're right, it will have an impact on the revenue coming back to the general government. It won't be the general fund, which is a good thing. But it's revenue that you would deprive the port from being able to use. Economic and park and development is another one of the loans.
Actually, there's three funds that made the loan. The Port Enterprise Fund, loan two-point-seven. The Community Facility Development Fund loaned it seven hundred thousand, and the Self-Insurance Fund loaned it six hundred thousand. And qualified, the real impact would be is that you simply wouldn't have the money available to appropriate in those funds until it was paid back.
And I can give you a real good example of how that potentially could play out. We're going to be recommending to the council at the meeting of the six that we take a slightly different approach relative to the sheet pile retaining wall in Thomas Basin in terms of getting the initial evaluation done. Assuming one way or the other, that does get accomplished based on the budget that we put together for two thousand and fifteen, based on other needs, including the Thomas Basin sewall. We have no money to direct towards the repair of that sheet pile retaining wall. So these funds that we're not paying back, if the council were so inclined, if you wanted to draw from other funds to advance that project, that's where you could run into an impact, so...
I'm just wondering that if we kind of balance it out a little bit and it didn't have to take so much out of the telecommunications division, paid it over a longer period of time, if it would really significantly affect the general...
You, if you want to give us a payback interval, we certainly can run those numbers and show that.
Well, just looking at the sixty-five percent, it's a six- or seven-year payback is what's programmed. So I don't know if we run that out to ten years or twelve years, if that's what that's going to work for. That'll help us in not having to probably raise rates as significantly as we may. It's our own money, so we should be able to do some of that.
Right now, the payment's seven hundred thousand, isn't it? Something like that? Are that?
Seven hundred and something. The payment's eight hundred thousand, I believe. And next year, it'll go up to nine hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We knocked a hundred thousand off the principal for two thousand and fifteen, trying to make things balance.
Okay. But we can make anything. I mean, since we run both departments.
Yeah.
We can do anything we want.
But I think that's something that we should consider.
Yeah, I agree.
And if you can bring some back, some numbers on that, that would be wonderful. Did you talk about the water revenues in B10?
No.
Okay. I asked Carl of staff to get you guys a memo on what was happening in that particular department in regards to some of our larger users, and I think that as we think about rate, that we also got to think about revenues. And when we start thinking, you know, maybe we need to get those a little bit more equitable as we move through this.
What was the last date we... I mean, last... You know, we talked to the processors before and everything. Where did we end up at that so far?
Last year, we did an eight percent across-the-board increase, and the processors indicated that they would be coming back to us with an alternative proposal about two months prior to budget. We contacted the processors, let them know we were going into budget preparations, and we hadn't heard from them, and we have yet to get a response.
Your honor.
Yes.
This is the second year running that we've approached them to try to get indication on how we could move forward with this, and we haven't received the information back that I think that we wanted. And this particular... This last time, they were going to check with the state in regards to the fish tax, raw fish tax, and see if they could get more dispersed into Catch Can, maybe less to the borough, more to the city, or something from the state. I'm not sure which, and there was no follow-through on that, as far as I can tell, so we're back to square one. I think they deferred a rate increase for two years, and looking at the numbers that I've seen, we have to do something about it at some point.
Well, I agree. I think we need to... I mean, water rates need to go up, and I think the processors need to pay a hair of share than the our regular residential users, so we should come up with some kind of number, and that'll get them to show up here and talk to us, so...
Well, I think at short term, we should probably think about a flat rate increase, but I really think we need to get to a metered rate. And we could even make concessions within that if we thought it was necessary, but I think that's the fairest way to handle our larger producer.
Is that metered?
Yeah, the metered rate system.
We are working on that request, Councilmember Seabertson.
Thank you.
And I don't know if I will have it for Monday's meeting, but the meeting after that, I'll have those figures that you requested.
So you won't have it for the next meeting?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Bob? We're very open. You can...
Just move around as I see fit.
Yeah, that's all I've been doing.
Your honor, if I may, I... I guess I just want to be a voice in opposition to taxing the coal storage and putting most of the burden on them. I understand the rationale for it. But I also understand that, you know, we can... We keep talking about being business-friendly, and to sit there and make the claim that we have in this paper that we're a million bucks in the hole because of them. We're not a million bucks... Well, right, but that's what this leads it to, or whatever one it is. And we're not a million bucks in the hole because of them. Our water department costs $3.9 billion to run.
No, it wasn't a million dollars.
I'm sorry, million. I'm doing it again. So it's not billion, it's million, but $3.9 million to run. If they were to cut back on the water they used, the only consumable part of that budget is $300,000. So we could go through a huge conservation thing. We could cut our water use in half, and the part that's going to save us money is $300,000. So when we talk about the water rates, we have a lot of infrastructure. When we set up this program, or when we set up the water rate structure, we set it up to be an infrastructure-based system. And now sit there and if we're going to start saddling these guys with a majority of the increases because they got, you know, they were benefited by the fact that when the system got set up, it was designed to do that, I think hurts them and their business plan. I think we need to be careful about that.
Well, I don't think we want to be aggressive towards their rate. I think what there is, is, since they use a majority of the water, though, they... I don't think the residential should be covering your pain for all the business, the major users. I think that major users should pay a little more. I'm not asking for how much that's going to be or whatever, and they're not going to make it detrimental to their business. We are business-friendly. Until this budget shows up, showed up, we still... We have the lowest electric rates in the state, and we can keep working with them. I mean, we're not looking to hurt anybody's business. We just want to keep our business up close, too.
And I understand that. I also look at a lot of the rate increases that were... A lot of the increases in expenditures that we're having for the water lines. And a lot of what we're doing, a lot of the approvals we're doing are in the residential areas.
Anything else, Matt?
No.
Carl, the other thing is...
Can you tell what went wrong? I don't know why my iPad is ringing like that, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, the other thing that I don't, I forget, um, the water rates for the ships. When's the last time we looked at those? I probably brought it up last year, I just can't remember if we did anything or.
Councilmember Olson asked me to put together a table similar to what Mr. Kleinecker had put for, forward for the processors. We don't have any calculations that we can give you from 2014. That data just hasn't been compiled yet and I don't think we can do it for 2013. I'm trying to pull some figures together when we last looked at it, I think it's 2011, 2012, but I'll try to get to the council on Monday. At that point, it looked like we were making a profit and that's not to say that the council can't adjust rates if you're so inclined, but I'll try to get something recorded on that by Monday.
It'll be interesting to know, if you don't mind, I mean, how much we charge in terms of other communities.
I'm having that data compiled as well.
All right, because that, you know, it was really interesting, we got the major water usage consumers on here and ports wasn't even mentioned. We had a lot of harbors, but not much, no mention of how much went out of the port.
Well, the harbors, they just have that open spigot, they just run.
I, I know. But it seems like two or three times a day, we have an open spigot for cruise ships.
No, I'm, all four are looking at that, we're going to have to look at everything, so. All right. Any more questions in the transmitter letter?
I think there was one issue there when we were talking about putting money into the reserves and the fact that we usually don't spend all of our budget. And so assuming that's going to happen, there's going to be some, some excess money out of the 2014 budget. I don't know how much that's going to be and I don't know what it is historically, but we got to put that into consideration when we're looking at the overall revenues, I guess.
Yeah, we sort of talked about that. The estimate for 2014 was 10 and came in at 12 and now, when we were budgeting, now it says the end of the year is going to be eight, but we'll see what actually comes in for 2015. And I was, I was just talking to Carl and Bob about maybe they're being too conservative, but they're standing by their calculations. Yeah.
I have a question, when it comes down to our debt and our Series T bond, that's, that, is that, that's an electric, correct? And its, its final maturity is at the end of 2017 or the start of 2017?
End of 2017.
So we've got three, just three more years to pay on that. And then after that, we'll have 1.3 million free to, in terms of electric.
And then of course, we have the bond issued that was approved by the voters during October, $5 million that we could potentially be issuing at some point in the future that will have an impact on future debt service.
Right, but that'll be going for water.
Water, yeah, like, it's still part of that KPU.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
Hold on one minute, I'm looking at some of my notes. Well, Carl, one thing I was going to ask you on the Whitman Lake true-up thing and protocol and how that works, can you give us an example of how that will, how we'll, what will happen, how we'll be paying SEPA and what situations and what we won't?
Obviously, we haven't been through the process yet and there's probably some things in play. For where I sit today and where I sat before we authorized construction, given the fact of the true-up, there is, right now, as of today, there's not a whole lot of incentive to run that plant. Because SEPA can supply our needs with the current water and we've got a lot of water lately. And depending on how SEPA wants to interpret not only the agreement, but where we are commissioning Whitman for every kilowatt hour that we run that plant, we will have to pay SEPA 6.8 cents if they can supply us power. Now, when Swan is down for maintenance, it will be a time where we can run the facility. If we should experience dry periods and SEPA is not able to provide us power, we'll be able to, to, to run the plant. But as things stand right now, I think that's going to be, you know, few and far between. We have the ability to feed the hatchery, as I understand it, without running the smaller of the two units. And if that's the case, there'd be no incentive to run the smaller unit because we'd have to pay SEPA if they want to take a strict interpretation of the true-up agreement. So right now, for each kilowatt hour we run that plant, when SEPA can provide us a comparable kilowatt hour, we have to pay SEPA 6.8 cents.
Real incentive.
Pardon?
Yeah, real incentive. No, hold those comments for later. Any other questions, anybody else has going through the summary? Ed was up here. What's the status on the actual, Ed, can you get him back up again to your person? You talked about the roaming. What about our wireless setup? When's that, what are the new dates?
For voice?
Yeah, so we get started.
Sure. So it's, again, two components to the 4G system, one is data, the other is voice. We've launched data, data's working just great. As it relates to voice, because we don't have a legacy or we've never been in the voice service previously, we don't have what we'd call a legacy 3G system for voice. So we're completely dependent upon Verizon's rollout of what's called Volt E, which is voice over a 4G LTE network. Through other parts of the US, when they've launched 4G LTE service, they've used their legacy 3G, old system for voice, so they have basically a hybrid system. Short of it is, they are supposed to launch Volt E nationwide in February of 2015. Coincident with their launch of the related E911 system, necessary to make Volt E compatible with E911. Once they have launched that and proven that it's, that it works, then they'll begin to work with us so that we can implement voice in Ketchikan. The goal that we've established with them is to have that launched in time for the 2015 cruise ship season so that we can both roam their voice and offer our own voice service under the KPU wireless brand name. The reason it takes that long is that because it's just brand new, we have to go through rigorous testing with them and validate that it works completely, end to end.
So if they launch in February, we're going to test March and April?
Yes.
Okay, and then be ready for May?
Right.
And then how's our system going to Prince Rupert going?
It's, it's partially constructed. We have antennas in place down in Mount Hayes and Prince Rupert. We have antennas here in Ketchikan, ready to be mounted on the tower here and then two down at High Mountain. Right now, the installation goal is sometime between today and we hope February or March. Again, coincident with the, most important aspect of that turn-up is to be coincident with our launch of voice because we want to be sure we have redundant links to the lower 48 for voice. We're not pushing the installation of the radio per se, because the instant we turn it up, we have to start paying the lease fees.
So we want to make sure it's all in place?
Yes.
And then have voice so we can use that as a backup?
Have the radios placed to back up the voice if we use the fiber.
So that all is going to come together at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll need that for the cruise ship season 2015?
Correct. Yes, so, yes, today, all of the traffic that we're routing for data on the 4G LTE system goes stop on the fiber.
On the fiber. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Anything else on transmitter? Oh, I hate to bug you again, Ed. No, you don't. We were back talking to the microwave, you know, we're going to use that as a backup. Is there any other way we can utilize that system and bring in revenue?
Absolutely, and that is part of our long-term plan, there are.
And can you remind me, because I forgot?
Pardon?
Can you remind me what that is or, because I can't remember?
Sure. There are three opportunities that we know of. And the reason I'm hesitating is I don't want to say too much in.
Oh, that's right, okay.
But there are opportunities where we've visited with, with other telecommunications companies as well as one government entity who are very interested in using or leasing capacity from us on the radio.
And we have a lease rate and everything, we could lease it out then?
Absolutely, because we have spare capacity. We'd also have interest from some folks in Canada to lease capacity coming up this way.
Excellent. Don't move. I've got other notes here, I just want to make sure it doesn't involve you, I mean. No, that's good, thank you. Oh, Carl, the other question I had was on, you know, and I think I was against this, but I can't, the new policy requires KPU to maintain a reserve requirement of no less than 25% of operating expenses. Wasn't that a giant jump?
That's a policy that the council.
I know, I'm just trying to remember the.
Ah, yes, it was, the old policy was 12%.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
25%, yes.
So if we change that, how would that adjust on the budget or would it?
Well, it really wouldn't have an impact because we're not, we're not there at all.
Okay. I just wondered, I remember we did that and I thought that was totally unrealistic, but thank you very much.
Bob, what's the percentage?
Go ahead.
What is the percentage right now? Because we're getting here, so whatever, 15%. Sorry.
I'm guessing right now it'll probably be about 10%. 10 to 12%.
All right. Any other questions on that or we can go to summaries? Yeah, the only thing I marked I had was on debt where we can, looking at the 2017, like Matt said, is our next debt payoff of 1.3 million. Any other question, anything else on summary? Matt, if we pass anything, you have a question, we can always come back to whatever you have. This is wide open. Revenue. And I think, I talked a little about that already, at least my questions were brought up. I still don't, I'll try to sit down with Bob and maybe I can understand how our, and understand it better on how we're increasing our purchases from SEPA, but we're not seeing any major increase in our own operating revenues, so. I'll work on that.
I have a question about that. So we had, we had our own KPU-generated power shut down for portions of this year, right? So, but this next year, we don't expect to have that, those shutdowns with our own generated power?
We may have other units shut down, depending on what the council does with the capital budget.
So if we decide not to, then we could potentially have more in revenue. What we're projecting is that we're going to have these shutdowns so that we'll be purchasing more power from SEPA. Okay. And along these lines, when Whitman comes on board, if we have a power outage and if we were normally going to kick the diesels on, can we fire up Whitman and be just as quick and effective? That's my, right?
I don't know if Whitman could be fired up such to respond to a power outage the way we would with the diesels. And I'd have to defer to Mr. Minado on that. Relative to the true-up, if I put myself in the position of the CEO of SEPA, if they could supply us power while we're firing up Whitman, I would suspect that they would be looking at a true-up. I'm not sure. So Andy, can you address the question whether Whitman could replace Bailey in terms of responding to a power outage and bringing a system back up?
Certainly, Andy did not own KPU Electric Division Manager. It all depends where the outage is. So if we look back two and a half weeks where we had a slide and it basically severed the system a little bit north of the city, well then, no, right? So that north part would be islanded and have to be picked up by some other source. Depends where exactly the outage is. If it's in the right place, then Whitman certainly could help. So we know that the unit one is runnable, we've run it. We've run it for lake level mitigation. I've personally timed it, it starts up in about a minute and a half and we can load it up immediately, faster than we can diesel. So if the outage is in the appropriate place, yes, we could use that unit to, as opposed to diesel. The other thing I do want to state is that this true-up agreement, if you look at the lake levels across a year's time, there's a characteristic curve. So sometime around June, July, the lakes start filling quite high and start approaching spill. And they stay that way up until just about this time or into November. And then they start on their way down, which we call drafting. So that period of time, say five, five months or so, there's no practical reason to run Whitman. We have enough water from other sources, certainly SEPA. Once they start drafting, the way the true-up agreement works and the way I understand it, and maybe Councilmember Seabertson, you've seen it as probably as much detail as I have, maybe there's, but, but the way I see it, if they're not spilling, we have no true-up. So I would think that in another week or two, we could run Whitman practically without, without the true-up and run it right on into the following season if there is water, right? So I don't know if that answered a previous question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, and one of the things you have to remember, if we could utilize, if we had an outage and we had an option of Whitman or diesel, we're going to run Whitman because it's cheaper to run Whitman than it is to run the diesel, even with the true-up. Because we're paying 6.8 cents, but we're paying 24 cents for the diesel, if that's an option.
And I, I believe so, so in the words of the true-up, I mean, we, we look at, we look at these watts, we have a recording of it. And if we can justify to the SEPA board that this was done in replacement of diesel, then it's a, it's a free day, so to speak.
So if we have interruption of power from SEPA, there'd be no issue with us firing up Whitman at all?
Or any constraint from SEPA. So SEPA, right now, is on the books to supply us some 40 or 42 megawatts in total. So if there's any constraint whatsoever, we're free to run Whitman without a true-up.
Thank you. Any other questions, Randy? Thank you very much, Andy. All right. We're in revenues. You guys already talked about telecommunications and revenues.
You can bring up anything. You can bring up anything.
Well, I just noted that, you know, in our local network, we're in a minus, and same way in some of the miscellaneous stuff. The total telecommunications revenue is only 7.6%. Not a lot of margin for what we have out there, I guess.
Well, they're saying that then our, um... Oh, what do you call those, Carl, again, are gonna be down, those our model? Our, say again?
Regulated.
Yeah, regulated revenues are going down. Which they have been going down for. All right. We can get into the different departments, we can start with administrative. And that starts in E1. Any questions on administrative?
Your Honor?
Yes.
And I think there's a little bit of an explanation here, but Bob, could you under- tell us a little bit about the interdepartmental charges and reimbursable credits thing? And is it just a matter of better tracking is why those percentages are changing, or they-
Okay, the interdepartmental charge that we're assessing against the General Managers Division is related to insurance. And insurance has gone up. This year, the premiums have gone up. And we also had a recent reappraisal of our properties, and that had caused the insurance costs for departments to vary, depending on which properties are part of their department, and what the replacement value of those properties are. Doesn't have an impact on the General Manager, as far as properties go. And then the other thing, too, is we went back and reviewed our internal allocation, updated it, to make sure that we were properly allocating our liability costs to the departments, and that had an impact as well. Well, there were basically three factors: increased premiums, the reappraisal, and the review of our allocation. Thank you.
Bob, I have a follow-up to that. So if we reappraised these properties and they came in, we're talking about all the KPU properties, correct?
All properties, yes, for the city.
How did that affect the payment in lieu of taxes from KPU back to the city?
That doesn't, because the insurance appraisal did not include all properties of the city. It only includes our buildings. And it's based on replacement value, not assessed value. And there's a difference between the two.
Thank you.
Anything else on administrative? Sales and marketing.
Your Honor?
You bet, Bob.
I'm looking on page F7, and at code 63512.
Okay, technical services.
And, you know, we get the year-to-date budget stuff. In 2013, we used $9,000. Year-to-date, we've used $4,647. So if you do an estimate of $10,000 for the year, I guess I don't understand why we're raising it by $13,200. Under another 57%.
Kim Simpson, Sales, Marketing and Customer Service Division Manager. Within that category, it falls OSG billing, so we're planning to take our billing off-island, not just the KPU telecom, but also the electric billing. And so the new budget item, that includes taking the electric billing off to OSG Services, which is based actually in Arizona.
And why the strategy there?
Uh, there's a couple of things. One, we've got a $50,000 machine that breaks down periodically. We'll be having to replace that in a couple of years. To run the billing, telephone billing, I have to take my staff out generally for a couple of days to run the billing, and then we hand-deliver it. We've got an issue right now with our mailing with the CAS certification, and all that will be covered with this off-island billing. In addition, if we do wireless billing, the current billing system that we have was set up by Comsoft, who is our, actually our accounting billing vendor. They did for us, the first time we did telecom billing, they created the bill print for us, but they're not, they don't really make a bill print. And the sheer expense of having them attempt to do that would have far outweighed the cost of taking it off-island to somebody that, that's what they do. They do utility billing day in, day out, and it'll be a nice bill. We'll be able to get PDFs, so we're gonna have them available online, so people will be able to view them online. We wouldn't have that with our current billing system.
And our customers won't have to deal with them in any way, shape, or form?
With the billing, the utili-
OSS?
OSG? No, it'll be faster, it'll be a faster process. We'll produce the data here, transmit it to them, and they should be able to turn it around really quickly. We're really close to having a bill that people can look at, get an idea what it looks like. It's very nice, it's easy to read. It's much, much simpler to read than our current bill. I think our current bill's a little difficult to interpret, and this makes it very, very simple.
And so how did we print this bill in the past?
We do it here upstairs on the fourth floor. Have a big machine that periodically, the folding machine will break down, and so we all sit and hand-fold them.
What kind of man-hours did we spend on that?
Well, I took, takes people out, takes two days to run the bills, and then I have one staff person that stands down there and makes sure that it doesn't that it doesn't jam, and I'd rather have my people selling services than standing there watching a machine.
It's very labor-intensive, and when we have glitches, it gets very labor-intensive.
The other issue is the timing, because we print the postage on the on the envelopes. We have to get it to the, we have to get it to the post office that day. If we don't, then we've wasted all the postage, so it's very time-intensive. We have to be very careful in the timing. It's sometimes not convenient to pull somebody out of customer service, but we really have to do it, so we can get them printed, the postage on it correctly, into the post office before they're, before they, they'll reject it if it's not there by about mid-afternoon.
And we're already doing an electrical bill this way, or something else, did you say?
We'll be taking, we're planning to do the electric bill, take it also to OSG billing. So both of them will be produced by OSG billing.
So water's not gonna be covered under that?
Water is on the electric bill.
Anything else for Kim? Thanks, Kim. Okay, um... We can go back to Customer Service, if you have a question, otherwise, or Sales and Marketing, let's go into electric. Anybody have anything on electric?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Page, G6.
G6, that is.
And we have 51005, which is small tool. And I kinda understand what you're doing with this after I talked to the department a little bit, but it's been going up like at $10,000 a year. And in the narrative, it says that they're gonna tool out Whitman, and tool out possibly a pole truck. And, but in our, this year's budget, I think we've only spent about $19,000, so after talking to the department, they may even be able to do that with this year's budget. I guess on the Whitman thing, and I don't know where we are on money left on that, but I didn't know if we could tool that up out of our capital project itself. And if we could, uh... I don't, I don't know if I like to keep putting money like this into the small tools account and have it grow, and then not have it shrink again at some other point, because $10,000 a year seems, and I know this is a large department, and they have all kinds of specialized tools. It just seems that it's going up a little, a little too fast for me.
Carl, you got an answer?
Andy, do you wanna come up and address that remark?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Seaberson. Andy Denaro, Electric Division Manager. As far as the small tools, first off, if you look through the budget here, there's actually a couple of spots for small tools. And we do that to isolate the various departments, since there's specialized tools, as you indicated, that are different within each. So, for instance, some of the small tools, when you get in the automotive, we have a garage, obviously. We take care of about 139 vehicles, heavy machines, et cetera. So there are some specialized tools that go to that. Then also our meter department, different, and our lineman as well. And so that's why you see the small tools. There's no reason why, once we get the tooling that they want, that we can't diminish that over the years, answer that question. But based on the requests by the departments, and the particular tools that they wanna purchase, this is what we've integrated into the plan for 2015.
Okay. I just, you know, I'm just a little bit concerned about that, especially if we have monies that'll be available this year, and how we run that. Because as I look forward in the budget, you know, all three divisions, it's almost $80,000 in tools. For telecommunications, Water Department, and our Electric Division. Seems like a lot of tools every year.
I agree with Bob. The, um... So we're doing $40,000 in tools, or whatever it said there, for this year? Is that what that total was?
Yeah.
And, um... It's sort of like, um, maybe this year, give us a breakdown of every tool and the price, maybe. It just seems to be out of whack, too. Also, my other question I had is on travel and training. You know, we're doing the $66,000, and we've always invested a lot in this travel and training. Can you break down that, what that is for me, before our next meeting, and tell me where they're going? What kind of costs for registration fees and this kind of training?
May I do that now?
What?
May I do that right now?
If you got it. And I hate to be picky, but, you know, if we're gonna fight for an 8% increase, I'm gonna be picky.
Certainly. So in the, in the travel, training, and education piece, we have a couple of things that are mandated. So one of those is opacity training. So we budgeted for opacity training.
How much is the cost for required, you know, required stuff?
Yeah, so that's two individuals, well, here, I have a whole breakdown. It's two individuals, $1,600 per year, per person, for $3,200 total. I'd just pass this on to you.
So I mean, how much of the training is required?
Mandated.
Mandated.
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is you let us get back to you on Monday, and provide a written report, rather than try to-
Okay, no problem. That's all. Just to learn more about it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Page G7. I'm looking at 63509, which is disposal services. They used $4,000 in 2013, and they've only used $2,000 to date this year. And what this is for disposal, hazardous materials, PCB transformer stuff, asbestos. And realistically, we're not gonna use that $10,000. And so I'd make a motion to reduce it by five. Back to $5,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to second.
And I'd like to, you know, give Andy a chance if he wants to discuss that or not. But, you know, I don't think we have any transformers due for turnout, and and then if we ever did get into an asbestos issue, it's gonna be larger than what we have in this particular budget. Manny, Jack.
Call the rule. Oh, did you wanna say something, Andy?
No.
Call the rule.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Aye.
Seaberson?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I also have account 63514. It's other contractual services. And again, this, you know, account provides for the contract services that are not identified in the account classifications, such as oil and water analysts, and abatement, and equipment tool testing, that kind of stuff. Historically, you can look at, we've been using $7,826 in that particular thing. Year-to-date, even with the encumbrance of the last month, we've only used $5,000 or $5,400 of that. And, um... You know, I don't think we're gonna utilize a full $15,000 in that particular account, so or even a $10,000. And again, I wanna remind the departments that they can always come back to the Council if there's a need for more money, if we run into something that was, you know, unusual. So I would, I would move to cut that back to $10,000 based on our annual usage, and that still gives you 20% leeway over what we've used in past contracts. Unless there's something that's coming up this year that I don't, that we don't know about.
Thank you. We've basically used it as a placeholder, and where we use, or where we tap this probably most frequently here is would be exceptional transformer oil testing, for instance. So now if we develop a problem, we have to do a lot of testing. We're going to be going to that account, and that's why we set it up, so we can reduce it, and then, of course, if we have to make a budget transfer or something, we deal with it then, but that's all it was for, is a placeholder for, for that type of activity.
And my problem with placeholders is they're part of the budget, and they're something that we have to budget for, which raises the budget, and we may have to raise rates. So I'd make a motion that we reduce that by $15,000.
15 or 20?
15. Leaving it at 10. They did use $7,826, and we do have some transformers out there still. And we may run into a building where we have a little of asbestos or something, I mean, I don't know. But I think that the $10,000, they're only gonna use potentially the same $7,000 or $8,000, so it still leaves us 20% over what we would normally run into.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to second. Call the rule. Matt, go ahead.
We're only seeing two years' worth. Have we ever used more than that, going back 2012, 2011, 2010?
Electric Operations Manager, Mark Adams. There's been years past where we, where we had. The biggest hit to this account historically has been transformer disposal. And there was a time where we were having to pay a contractor to handle disposal of the oil and units themselves, but the last few years, we've been fortunate with the, with the price of metals as they are, that we've been able to basically the contractors taking the transformers at no cost to us, because of the scrap value was high enough. So recently, we've been able to avoid that, that large hit that we used to see.
Okay, so this $25,000 used to be-
It used to get hit, yeah.
And it's been going down, just because of the price of metals, okay. And I'm not sure I'm in favor of doing it because of the mark, the price of, if that's the case, and all of a sudden, whoever is just doing the disposal decides to start charging us again, so... I think I'm still comfortable with the 25.
Go ahead, Bob.
We had a pretty aggressive transformer changeout a few years back, I guess, which when Tenus and all those guys, we went through a lot of this stuff and shipped out a lot of stuff. What is our present liability, I guess, with PCB transformers?
We don't have very many, we don't have any quote-unquote hot transformers with PCBs of a certain level. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but we don't have very many transformers at all that have any any level of PCBs in them. So we're, they are coming out of the system, and if they don't have any previous tests on record, then we just have to go ahead and get the oil tests, so the disposer knows what, what level of PCBs they have. But it's not just PCB transformers, it's, it's any of the transformers that come out, so...
Yeah. But a core test isn't, isn't it very expensive? Is that what you want? Is that what you want? Do you want to, you just do a core test for the PCBs themselves, or?
Yeah, we, we, we take a sample of the oil and we ship it off to a, a third party, basically.
Anybody else on electric?
We have a motion on the core.
Oh, sorry, call the rule.
Does everybody know what the motion is?
Cut at fifteen.
Kiper?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuss? Oh, sorry. Harris?
Okay.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Zini?
Yes.
Carl, I did have one question I forgot on this. The expenditure category that mentions under division summary, it says in two thousand thirteen, we had seventeen million. And then we budgeted for fourteen, I mean seventeen again, for fourteen, but we came in at sixteen point six. Did we have some positions?
You're gonna have to tell me where you're looking.
Oh, I'm sorry, on G four. I apologize. And then we're budgeting for seventeen. Did we have something that didn't come through, or some vacancies, or?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where your
Um, G fourteen, I mean, G four, at the top there, it says division summary, and it's expenditures by category. And I saw the dip there for, your estimate for the finish in two thousand fourteen, even though it was seventeen in two thousand thirteen. I was just curious for the dip, since you got it budgeted for seventeen again in two thousand thirteen.
Well, looking at just, you know, personnel was down, supplies were down. Bob, come on.
Do we have people and personnel not, positions left open? We can't hire somebody? What's going on?
I can't explain all of it off the top of my head, but part of it is due to the purchased power rebate. We did not budget for a four hundred fifty thousand dollar purchased power rebate. And the way we budgeted for it, we netted against the cost of purchased power. So you're seeing a four hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction just because of the rebate.
Thank you. Anybody else on electric?
No.
Go ahead.
Back on G seven, seven twenty-five zero one, computers, printers and copiers. Something we need to understand. You notice that the increase is because you had seven new computers needed for replacement. Is there a schedule, you've got all the computers there, so that you know, seven this year, six next year, is there, is there some?
We rely on the city's IT, IT department. And we, when we get together and start talking about the budget, they give us a list of what computers are due for replacement on any given year.
But there is, there is a, a schedule or something?
Correct. Each year, IT prepares that on a citywide basis and supplies it to my office prior to budget.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Is that based on time or usage, or?
Any idea, Mark?
I, I would imagine that's, it's a certain timeframe. I think, you know, computers got just a set expected life expectancy. And I don't know, I, I don't off the top of my head what that would be, but I'm, I'm sure that's twenty-four years, that was probably what it, what it would be.
And it depends, I guess, of what it's used for.
Correct, right.
Thank you.
Anything left on that, or are you on move to telecommunications? Let's move the telephone. And you'll get a set information that Bob requested on our payback to the city.
Yes.
It's nice to be being, paying ourselves back, that's right. That's painful. Given you do the city budget, we can decide how we want to play with it.
You should cut it. Sounds like you already have some plans for
Your honor?
You bet.
I see we have a new one here, which is considered inventory for sale. What are we talking about there?
Dan?
Sure. There's approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget for next year for inventory for resale, which is essentially us purchasing the wireless, four G LTE handsets that we'll resell to customers. We have to, we have to purchase an inventory, whenever they have an inventory to sell.
Is, is there any partner with Verizon on, on the product at all?
No, we're just like any other, at that stage in the game, we're like any other business. We have to buy an inventory, to have an inventory on hand to sell, to customers who walk into the store. And of course, in the four G world, seller world, when I sell you a handset, I might have purchased a handset for four hundred dollars for inventory, but you're probably not gonna buy it for four hundred straight across, you're probably gonna pay me twenty dollars a month for two years, or whatever the algorithm is up there.
So we have two hundred and twenty based on our perception of what the market's gonna be?
Right.
So how, what kind of increments are you gonna buy these things in?
I, I don't recall what the increment was. You know, we ran a calculation about whether we need X number of handsets at Y cost and build up the inventory. So that we have sufficient to sell. I don't recall the exact number.
So, and these will be for the Verizon four G?
Right, I'll, we'll brand them KP wireless, but yes.
So if somebody had their own phone today that they liked, they could come in and change over, could they still utilize that phone?
If our SIM chip will work in that phone, I mean, if there's so many out there, that's kind of a loaded question. I might be able to walk in with an AT&T store today with a phone that had Verizon, or might not, just depends.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm just a little puzzled, maybe I need a brief explanation here on, this is on, it's on H, H eight, six hundred oh one oh two oh three. We have had cost this year, we're looking at no cost at all, that's the, that's the contract purchase services, travel, training, business, et cetera, et cetera. I'm looking at zeroing those out, so I'm curious, but, we actually know it's the same.
Any other questions?
Again, your honor?
You go ahead.
The, the travel training site stuff, I think I'd like to have a little bit more detail on that. Because when you look overall with the, all the budgets, the amount of money we're gonna be spending on travel and training is gonna be substantial. And at a time when we're talking about rate increases, I understand that it's, it's important that we keep our employees up to date and all that kind of stuff. But again, I think that it should be for necessary training to meet the needs. And I, I guess I'd just like to have a better understanding of what those are.
Councilmember receiver tonight, presume your question is derived to all, all divisions, not just telecommunications, correct? Yes.
What is the difference between travel training and travel training and education?
Travel training, here's the cost to get through where the training is. And travel training and education is the cost of the courses, the registration teams, et cetera, et cetera. What we're trying to do would show, instead of giving you one number for travel and training, we wanted to show how much it costs to actually go there. So you could see where we're really spending the dollars on, on, you know, the after classes and so.
Any other questions? You guys are thinking on that one. We have water, if you have any questions on that. Carl, you said you eliminated two positions out of this budget? Is that what I read in here?
We eliminated one from telecom, is my recollection.
No, I know, I'm not from this department, but for the whole, but
Over the course of the two-year, two fiscal year period, correct.
Two positions over two years, or?
Yeah, we did one this year relative to health insurance, and then we're proposing to eliminate the engineer position.
For this year?
In two thousand fifteen.
So it's one.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
On I four,
Okay.
Under the operated budget changes in two thousand and fifteen, under the machinery and equipment account, it was, when I was reading through that, I found out that the fastest we can get UV spare parts delivered to the Canadian factory is eight days. Apparently, when we got into this, there was a US delivery port where that carried part, and that's no longer true. And that's a little disconcerting, and I'm certainly hoping that anything that we move forward with, we have a better understanding of those parts being in the United States and available to us. But the other thing they talk about is from time to time, the ammonium totes are sent south by Bard, and then they truck them back for refill. And, you know, realistically, that should not be a, like, consider an extra expense, because you just have enough totes in rotation, so that they're moving through the system. We'll get an idea of what volumes we're using, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't add extra costs. It's just a standard fee for keeping our supply stock, I would think. I wanted to make sure that that was because they're talking about a major change in, in some of that, and it shouldn't really add costs. And, your honor?
Yes.
On I six, item six oh five oh two, is there a typo there of some kind? Because we show that we used thirty-one hundred in two thousand and thirteen, eight thousand, we amended to twenty-three thousand. It goes back to eight thousand, and it shows zero percent increase or decrease.
I think the majority of that during two thousand fourteen was the additional advertising and publishing we had to do relative to the conversion chloramines that we don't anticipate doing next year.
Oh, so we transferred money into that account just for the one-time event, that's why it went up to the twenty-three thousand?
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right, I got that. Thank you. Anything else?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. We look at water rates and we look at ways to account for, for this. We've talked in the past of using fish tax revenues to possibly be pulled over to this. Is, do we know if we can actually do that and utilize some of that excess from, from part, from parts, from ports to, to put it in and help balance the water division?
So your question is, can we use raw fish tax money and put it in the KPU water division?
Yes.
To the best of my knowledge, there's no restriction on how the raw fish tax money is used. So I think the answer would be yes, we could. However, we more or less dedicated the raw fish tax to pay back the loan that the Harvard Department supplied for the write-down grant. And so we're in the process to pay that back, and that was a one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan.
And that's how we reprogrammed the excess use of those funds for the two thousand and fifteen budget. So that's, you'll see that a week from tomorrow, if the general government budget out.
Sure.
But we take, we're expecting to get more than, we were gonna pay that back over five years, right?
I think it was a four-year payback with the fund. Do I like, we did get more raw fish tax, the number is somewhat tentative, but it looks like we're gonna get about seven hundred and forty-five thousand. And last year, we dropped four hundred and fifty-four thousand.
So if we're paying it back over four years, we're looking at roughly, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar payment?
The way it's programmed in the general government budget right now for two thousand and fifteen, we're recommending that we accelerate that payment and pay the loan back as quickly as possible, the excess raw fish tax money.
All right, so we could slow that down if we wanted to and keep it on schedule and utilize some of those funds in other places. Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Matt, for the discussions we had with fish processors, it was their proposal that they go back to the state and have a reapportionment of the raw fish taxes that sits today. It wasn't to be used out of our present allocation, it was additional allocation to offset, because it would go back to the fish processors. And just for that particular use, is the way I understood that.
Caution that the amount that we're projecting this year is not necessarily gonna be a continued payment. My understanding is based on an extraordinary year in terms of the fishing industry, so it may not be there twelve months from now.
No, I, I understand that, and I understand that they were looking at, at proposing that. But in the meantime, we, we have additional funds that are generated by the fishing industry. And this is one way that we could utilize those funds in the benefit of the fishing industry, which was the whole reason for putting that, that bulk of money into harbors, was to benefit the harbors, to make it better for the fishermen and the people that produce that tax. And this is another way that we can utilize that tax to offset some of the potential increases. If we only do a little bit, we do a little bit, but to me, that would be an appropriate use of those funds, if we have excess for paying back that loan.
Your honor?
Go ahead, Julia.
Last year, Carl, I think you gave us a list of positions that hadn't been filled and potential, or will we get that with the KPU budget? To see if there's any positions that have yet to be filled?
We can do that.
And then, I can't remember what page of this transmitted, but when I added up, okay, it was B four, and sort of made a calculation of what these rate increases mean to people, and I come out with two hundred and ninety-four dollars per family in a year. So if somebody could just verify that math.
We can do that.
Hopefully, I'm reading it right. Hopefully, I'm reading it wrong.
And I saw it earlier, Carl. With the water increase, rate increase, what's that gonna do for end of the year? How much of that deficit is it going to change?
I'll defer to Mr. Noel.
An eight percent rate increase will reduce the deficit by about two hundred and fifty thousand.
And then we had a lot of debt we paid off in water at the end of last year. So that didn't help us coming into this year?
Yes and no. It does help, but then we're also adding new debt to replace the debt we paid off, not necessarily dollars for dollars.
How close was it?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and do it.
And I go back to my opening comments, Mr. Mayor, we got the second draft of the compliance order by consent from DEC yesterday, and by the time you're done, I think you're going to be close to spending $3 million if the council elects to approve, approve the order, given what ADEC is likely to require.
What is that, you're just talking about the numbers, Carl?
No, I'm just trying to make sure everybody is aware of what's out there. It's a bunch of moving parts.
I understand.
So, Your Honor.
Yeah.
So this budget doesn't obviously include the IBW contract that we're working on, and the three, potentially $3 million.
That's not included.
And we're looking to hit.
Anything else on water? Anything in capital?
Your honor.
Yes.
Can we have, Andy, can you come up and talk to us about our rewinds and all that that are going to affect our production?
I'll certainly try, thank you.
Yeah.
We, through testing, we have identified two generators that, that needed help. The worst case was Beaver Falls Unit One, it was a 1904 machine, and we couldn't figure out how it was even running, so we rewound that. And so we set up a budget, we set up a budget to, actually two budgets. One budget was to do testing, since, since there's a considerable cost to do the kind of testing for those, and then the other was testing and minor repair, and the other was the actual rewinds. So for, for this past year, we, we, we had a budget to do two rewinds. Well, it turned out that the additional replacement of the core on Beaver Falls ate into the second rewind, so we don't have sufficient funds in that one to do a second rewind this year. We thought maybe if we could use both budgets, the budget for the testing and small repair, and what's left in the rewind, maybe we could do Catch Can Unit Three. Catch Can Unit Three is the next one on the list. So then after that, then we want to go test the other units, and in, in the year's future, we want to set up a budget to, to rewind at least one additional. So, so that basically describes what, what the strategy is going forward for the rewinds on the generators.
And so when the generator's down, we're required to make up that additional generation we threw SEPA first, correct?
I would suppose in general, the answer would be yes, it depends on the time of the year and the loads. So if you look at the load profile, you know, once fall comes around, the temperatures are still relatively high, there's really no significant heat load, the fish processing load has gone, and so, and, and rain is prevalent, and so we have lots of generation. So again, it depends on the time of the year. I don't know if that answered that question, but.
No, it does, I'm just, you know, I, I would just hope that when you schedule these, if we are able to work a way that we can utilize Whitman to offset some of that generation where we don't have to pay for, you know, for that loss of generation where we don't have to pay for it, that we do that.
The power sales agreement, or the true-up doesn't allow for that in exchange, if you will, right? Because that would be nice if we had that, but the, the true-up doesn't allow for that. So basically, if we run Whitman anytime that SEPA is capable of supplying that load, the true-up.
No, right, I just, I just hope that we can do it when SEPA's not able to.
Not when we want to.
That's what, that's what I'm, I mean, you know.
Least impact on the system.
Bob?
Andy, how many machines do we have?
Just quick inventory, we have three in Catch Can, the oldest one there, I think, is 1938. We have three operating units in, in Beaver Falls, right? There's a fourth one there, it's Memorial, that's not within the first.
We actually have one, right, that would need to be rewound and tested, because we just did one, right?
One in Catch Can, Unit Three in Catch Can we need to do.
No, I mean, Beaver Falls, we have two machines and one that isn't operational, but we only have one in there that would need to be tested and cleaned, because we just finished one. Is that correct?
Well, the other two, we would, would, would come in, in the years forthcoming. We don't have those on schedule for 2015. We, we think those are reasonably good shape, and we just did one, Unit One. But just to answer the question, though, we have three operating units in Beaver Falls, and then we have one operating unit at Silvis, and then, of course, the two new units at Whitman. So that total is, three and three is six, seven, eight, nine, thanks.
Andy, so we have seven that we have for future testing and cleaning and possible repairs.
Correct. Now that, and, and that's just the hydros, right? We still want to do maintenance on our diesels, right? You don't want to just let those go.
That's what I get to, yeah.
Yeah, that's important as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, we lean hard on, on Bailey Diesel Generator Number Four, and so you see periodically, we have some, some, some large maintenance requirements on that. Like, for instance, last year, we had to replace the engine mounts, and unfortunately, like, like your car probably has two or three engine mounts, that one had 72, and that was costly. If I answered that question?
Any other questions for Andy? Go ahead, Bob.
C five, it talks about the battery bank at Bailey, and it states that it's at the end of the life, and is there, is there a particular problem with that battery bank at this point?
No, not a particular problem that we fight, those batteries, those utility batteries are good for about 30 years.
One of the ones at Bailey.
I'll have to get to the actual age on that.
But, I mean, are they, they close to 30 years, is what you're thinking? Or beyond 30 years?
Okay.
And all either probably purchased at the same time, kind of a deal?
Right, they're large banks.
So potentially, we'd be good for another 30 years once we get to a decision.
Yes.
Actually.
Go ahead.
Somebody tracking, able to read this, I got to him this morning, but, so we're basically looking at dropping down capital projects for this next year, then boosting them way back up again in 2016, is that correct?
Depends on what revenues are available. The approach we took when we put together the 2015 budget, as was outlined in the transmittal letter, we had to cut close to $4 million in capital to get things to balance, that which was cut just deferred to 2016. Obviously, we're not going to have the revenue to do that, so things will just continue to be deferred.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, same thing as Dave was saying there, and hopefully, at some point in the coming year, you can take a look at 2016 and hopefully disperse some of those over the later years, depending on the, the need, because I think $6 million in 2016 might be reaching a little bit.
Andy? Can you talk about operating equipment? The 400 just continuously out there, just describe what you're using that for. The for, uh, operating equipment, $400,000 for electric. Every year, we've got it going out all the way to 2020.
Is that, that's in the CIP, so there should be a breakdown?
There is, but just kind of for the public, can you describe what you're looking at for things like that?
I have to get the list here. Well, so in the operating equipment, we've got identified some 12 categories. I want to say that they're not exactly fixed to these 12 categories, but they cover pretty much the entire, the entire range that, that, that we try to support. SCADA critical parts, and there's not much in there, so we've allowed ourselves some $3,300 for, for SCADA critical parts. So there's a bunch of computers and firmware and boxes that, that supply our, that, that support our SCADA system, and every now and then, one of those go bad, and so we have to get another box to stick in there. So there's a, there's a placeholder, if you will, for that. Rock drill, we have a, a truck that drills into, places holes, et cetera, and it wears out really fast drilling into rock, and there's lots of that here on the island. We even have one here for an automatic external defibrillator, automated external defibrillator. We were trying to put defibrillators on all of the line trucks, so if someone took a hit electrically, you'd have a, a person there to restart them as soon as possible. So I think that's just darn good safety.
How many line trucks do we have? Just guess.
Four, four bucket trucks and three boom trucks.
And how, have we got any of those on vehicles yet?
Yeah, this, we do, we're, we're, with the exception of the last one, all of the main trucks and the Foreman rigs have the AEDs as well as Silvis Powerhouse, this last one would be slated for Beaver Falls Powerhouse.
For the powerhouse or for the truck?
For the powerhouse.
Okay.
So Andy, I'm sorry, I really, I don't want you to go read down, but what we're, I guess my point is here is that these are, especially when we get into the meters and we look into transformers, these are things that KPU needs to operate and operate effectively and efficiently, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that point, because you see this $400,000 going out there, and if, when you're looking through the budget as a public, I just wanted to make sure that there was, you know, we're looking at meters and replacement parts and all that, that these are things that we do need.
Yeah, the also, the unfortunate thing is, we have a lot of tools that do calibration for our meters, we have fixtures, you plug the meter in, those require calibration and certification, and we send those out, and it's unfortunate they're at a high dollar. But that's the business that we're in, right? So you get a unit back, and it's calibrated to the National Bureau of Corner Gas Station, so when you plug in a meter, you got that standard.
Bob?
The AMI, the AMI meters, how far are we built out on those, Andy? How many do we have in service compared to our total number of meters?
Well, okay, so we have exactly 7,600 customers, and boy, I think our last count, we were some 4,700 or so in terms of deployment, and I think the number that I cranked out was nearly exactly 62% deployed.
And so this 150,000, how many meters does that put out for a year, you think? Roughly.
$67 per meter, but that's in addition to some other budgets that we have. There's other parts required in the meters other than just the meters themselves, right? So there's a, there's some centralized pieces, parts that support areas of meters, and, and they occasionally require replacement in addition to the meters, but the meters are somewhere around the $67 per meter.
So we're going to get 1,000 meters out of this, maybe?
Yeah, I could do some quick division, but you.
Yeah, something like that.
And so we're, we're incrementing year by year to try to get, I don't think we'll ever get fully 100% deployed. We don't, and the reason being is because we have applications that just don't lend themselves to remote read. So, so we'll always have a hodgepodge, and we're, we're also at a position now where we have two styles that we support, one is called PLC, and one is called radio read, and in, in modern-day systems, you have a mixture of both, because there's, there's not one application that's suitable for just one technology. So for instance, in the high-rise buildings here, we go to radio reads, dock systems, we go to radio reads, rest of the system, PLC, and so you have an integration of both. Anything else?
Just as a, I think an admission or something we didn't clean up on C eight under the vehicle moving and equipment, we're not going to do the new equipment trailer this year, that would defer it off for another two years or a year or something like that, if I understand, looking at the capital.
Right, that was pushed out, that was joint with water, and it's like, we pushed out to 2016.
I noticed it wasn't listed on the side there.
Anything else on capital?
I'm going to move down into telecommunications. And it's starting with item, you know, D two, it's normal growth and repair for building for $40,000. Are these specific projects, or are these just things that come up from time to time, Ed?
At this stage, these are just things that come up from time to time, we don't have a list of specific projects right now.
And my concern is, is I, and I talked to Bob a little bit about this earlier, is some of these things almost seem like they're operating budget stuff, and somehow they end up in the capital side of things, and they're tracked a little bit differently for me. And like this normal growth for central office and switching gear, you had $20,000 budgeted, and you only had $6,700 encumbered, so you only used 39% of that budget. And I did get a document from Bob that I asked for in regards to what you were going to actually use for the year, and I don't know how much thought went into it, but everything came out that I'm going to use everything you're going to give me.
Would you like me to generally?
Great, yeah, go ahead if you would, please.
Certainly. If, the, the sheet I was looking at earlier today compared budget to expenses to date versus encumbrances, and then suggested a balance residual, if you will, and at that point, the residual was roughly $700,000 that either hadn't been spent or hadn't been encumbered. But when we ran through the list of items we have left yet this year to procure, between fiber to the home expenditures and batteries and MDUs and an item called quilt, and we, we essentially end up spending almost all of that residual by the end of the year. So there isn't a big bucket of cash left from this budget.
Well, some of the stuff seems fairly aggressive if you haven't spent, you know, a, a good chunk of that to, up until the end of September, you only got a few months to the end of the year, and that's pretty aggressive thinking when you, you look at some of the stuff that you have in here.
Yeah, but typically, using MDUs as an example, it's not unusual for us that by the end of the year, we'll buy MDU equipment this year that we're going to be deploying next year. Yes, for example, during the first quarter, but it's booked into 2014. The other thing I should point out on the capital side of the house, in the, in the funny world of telecommunications, relative to the models we run, and relative to the not, the regulated revenue we receive from high-cost funding support, et cetera, it's in part based upon depreciation, which is based upon total capital investment, and you don't want to get behind the algorithm, so to speak. And you don't wanna get behind the, uh, algorithm, so to speak, or your regulated revenue will, will go down. So, it's important that we keep reinvesting in the, in the network.
I, I don't disagree with that. It's just the fact that I want, I don't wanna be in a position that we're over-budgeting and raising rates if we have surplus, large surpluses at the end of the year. That, that's all I'm concerned about.
Oh, no, I completely understand that.
Yeah, okay. And so, some of those normal growth things is almost like they're in operation. I get you can put them either twice, but it's. Fiber to the home, you got, uh, prior years, we spent, you know, almost nine hundred thousand. You got forty thousand and fifty thousand, all budgets out. And, um, you know, we, we viewed twenty-two thousand of that forty thousand or whatever it was to this date. Is that, uh, we've only used twenty-one percent of that budget? If you, if you're looking and raise that over the, the year's time. Are we catching up on that to a point where it's probably not as?
Sure, in the, in the earlier years, we were spending a great deal more on fiber to the home because we were actually building out the plant, so to speak, building out the cable plant. Essentially, we're complete with building out the fiber to the home cable plant. And we're very close to complete with building out what we call fiber to the business cable plant, which essentially the underground downtown with some aerial, essentially from the shipyard down through, past the dry cleaners. So, so on a going-forward basis, most of the fiber to the home investment is relatively small leads and maybe a new subdivision or we, we lost a lead somewhere and/or the electron, the associate electronics for converting customers. So, the fiber to the home initial capital construction budgets didn't include the electronics per se because we'd be cutting the customers over. We now have roughly six, fifteen to sixteen hundred customers on fiber and we'll continue to, uh, convert as, as quickly as we can. I think we're averaging about three hundred a year, uh, which is, is a pretty great progress.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's one, another one here that. Oh, um, the LiveWire Design Tool, you're looking at a replacement there, that's item D seventeen. And is that a, uh, a CAN program for building out your system in the design capacity or something? I'm not exactly sure what we're, we're getting for that particular item. And what, what, what does it replace? I mean, what, what, what have we been using?
Sure, um, so, LiveWire is, is essentially a tool that's used by our outside plant engineering, uh, group to, in the, in the design and well as the compilation and, uh, of the database we have on all of our outside plant facilities that we subsequently use, one to track investment, two to, uh, utilize for records in our line of service. She was on assigning this plant, uh, network plant facilities around the community. In the past, we've used, uh, some, some, uh, CAN software programs that weren't as robust as you would like. And we fell way behind the curve relative to record keeping. And we're still in the process of catching up in that regard. And we need LiveWire to ensure that we can get this job done with our existing staff. Otherwise, we have a backlog of, of work that essentially we aren't ever going to catch up on, given some rudimentary tools we have at our disposal.
Do you have any idea what our yearly cost is gonna be for that? We, we bought into these system, large systems, you know, large exists. And I just wondered if there's a software maintenance surcharge or something that we gotta go through?
Yeah, excuse me. So, I'm not sure you could hear that, but the answer is we're presently paying about ten thousand a year for the existing software system. The ongoing annual support fees for the new system are essentially the same, about ten thousand.
Yeah, that, that's one of the things when we get into these programs, I just wanna make sure we're not.
We're, we're extraordinarily sensitive to the support fees associated with all of, all of, uh, the technology we have.
Anything else? Well, I see that, um, you have, uh, under item D twenty-three, a, a, a home monitoring module that you're, uh, I guess looking to offer. And my question is, will the revenue cover the costs of, uh, the business plan for this?
Yeah, yes, or we won't do it. Again, there's no economy in doing it if the revenue doesn't, uh, doesn't cover it.
I think that's, I have, all I have for it. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, then we did really good tonight. The, um. What? We still have water.
Oh, I think.
Go ahead, you got water, go for it. We're doing water now. The, uh, raw water transmission made on E two, um, in two thousand and fourteen, we had budgeted four hundred and ninety-five thousand. We only spent fifty thousand of it. Is that because of grants and programs that we didn't get, Carl, or is, uh?
Basically, it's my understanding, and John, you can help me if I'm, I'm wrong. The raw water transmission, we've got to a point now where it's designed and that will be going out to bid, uh, early next year.
Hey, I hope so. Uh, it's with, on CD E C for, uh, review at the moment. And, uh, as we all know, that may take some time.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Um, and then another question on E three, we're working on replacing those Cortex titanium generating cells.
Yes.
Do we have those on a five-year plan or a rotational basis or something?
No, uh, basically, when we bought the system in, uh, two thousand and two, uh, the expected life was, uh, seven years, uh, uh, which was a, uh, typical life that the factory, uh, planned on. But because our water is essentially nothing but, uh, rainwater and it's very soft, uh, we've gotten twelve years out of them. And, uh, the new ones, uh, that the council approved, uh, two meetings ago, were installed, uh, this week. And, uh, when this budget is approved, we'll, uh, change the other three.
Um, so, but those will end up someplace on a reoccurring capital account, I would imagine?
Yes, um, probably in, in the reach, well, if we've gotten twelve years of life, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, two thousand, well, not leave, but you guys would be looking at, uh, two thousand twenty-six.
I hope we're not here.
Did we, did we get a, is the expected life of those the same, right, of the new cells?
Huh, uh, probably not. Uh, we built the whole addition for the Cortex system for, as I recall, close to six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, just these three units were forty-four thousand dollars. And, um, as we get closer in the two-point, uh, culmination, uh, complete design, I think we're gonna find that the prices, uh, in the last twelve years have come up dramatically.
Oh, no, I meant, uh, the original cells were expected to last for seven years.
Yes.
Do the, are the new ones, is there an, is their life, have they improved the technology to where the expected life of those is longer? Or we, should we expect still to have seven years and if we're lucky, we'll get a few more?
Basically, the, um, plates in the generating cells, if you, I have some time, we'd be, I have to show them to you. With electrolysis, uh, you know, you're generating hydrogen coming off of the fins. It's, uh, analogous, uh, to where if your outward, uh, mortar, uh, cavitates, it, it puts pits in the, uh, propeller. And, uh, although titanium is, is a much more resistant, uh, material, uh, it will gradually thin. And then, uh, to make it, uh, generate, uh, the, uh, bleach, uh, you have to put more power on it. So, it's, it's, it, it's a self-defeating, uh, system, but, uh, fortunately, it takes, uh, quite a, a while before they, uh, have to be replaced.
Great. Okay, any last minute questions? We're coming to our two-hour limit.
I've still got a couple.
Go ahead.
Item, uh, E four, which is the water, uh, distribution grid improvements. It's budgeted for sixty thousand dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, you use, others, you budgeted fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and it has zero activity according to the, the plan. And so, again, this is one of those things where maybe we're over-budgeting. Uh, I know this is for when things come up, but apparently things haven't come up because we haven't had to utilize the fund.
Uh, no, it, uh, I don't think all the, uh, bills have come in, but, uh, the, uh, paving, uh, projects, uh, had a lot of valve boxes, uh, excellent raised. And, uh, we normally work with the, uh, public works, uh, department to help, uh, support the cost.
Yeah, but I think that's covered under additional projects and not underneath the water distribution grid improvements. Because your additional project is for raising and replacing valve boxes. I think that this water distribution improvement thing with zero activity is, uh, over-budgeted. And I guess rather than me cutting it, I think that I'd like to see the department really take a good, close look and see what you've used in the past and come back with a, a different number if that's appropriate, is, is all I'm asking. And, and then we go down to E five, which was the one about the additional projects. I've heard rumors from con, contractors that when we go to valve boxes, we have to have boxes manufactured because they're somewhat not standard.
Uh, it's not that they're not, uh, standard. Uh, it's, uh, uh, the pattern that we use probably dates back, uh, to the turn of the last century. Uh, it allows you, uh, to remove, uh, the valve box, uh, lid through a locking system that a washer goes into the side of the valve box. And then, as you open the bolt, then the lid can come up. The modern ones, uh, that other, uh, people are using have a little bitty tab, uh, protruding into the valve box that then the locking, uh, cap screw bolts into. Well, being cast iron, uh, the first, uh, time you open up the valve box, you normally, uh, break that little tab. And then after that, you know, the valve box lid kicks out through traffic coming over, then the valve box fills with dirt. It's just a, a real poor substitute, uh, for what, uh, tech, uh, technology, uh, developed, you know, probably more than a, a hundred years ago.
Well, and, and, and having said that, the valve boxes themselves, I notice they're out there cutting the thread parts off and doing all these things and trying to align them. Is there PVC or ABS or fiberglass or, or something that's more, um, user-friendly when we go out and do these things? I know that sometimes when we go into these paving contracts, uh, for overlays, half the cost is putting water valves in. Uh, and, and if we can get away from some of that, our money, of course, for the paving projects is gonna stretch further and you're not gonna have so much money coming out of your, your other projects. And, and I don't know if there's technology after that we can do that. Just because we've done it in the past doesn't need, necessarily mean that we need to keep doing it going forward. If there's a better, uh, mousetrap, uh, I, I think that we should really look into that. Cause I know that, uh, there, and I looked up water valve just online to see what's going, and there's a ton of those things down there. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. I wanna make sure that we're using something to, that, that's good, of course, but there may be a cheaper way to do it and a easier way when we get into the installation. I don't know, that, that's your guys' expertise, but just from what I see, uh, it, it's sometimes very labor-intensive to get, and we have to cut the bases and do all kinds of different things to make them fit. And then it'll get true, so, I don't know if there's something better, John?
Uh, it's certainly true. Uh, we'll certainly take another look at the, uh, plastic, at least because, you know, the whole technology is converting, uh, to plastic. The nice part about the cast iron is, is, uh, they're not expensive, uh, in terms of the material costs. They're only about forty-five bucks, uh, for a top or a block.
Yeah, but the labor of putting them in may add to that cost.
Yeah, the contractors don't like to do it, it's very true.
But there may be a better mousetrap after that works just as well, is all I'm asking.
Well, we certainly, uh, love and, uh, yes, I have seen, uh, plastic ones. We can certainly, uh, put some in and, uh, see how they work out.
I appreciate that, thank you, John. The other one I have is E six, which is Water Supply Upgrade Program. And that's where, when a, um, homeowner does some work on his, uh, service, that we can give him a, a rebate for some of the available work. Well, in two thousand and fourteen, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars and up to this date, we've only used five hundred. Um, I think, again, thirty thousand dollars is over-budgeted and I would, uh, I presume that we could cut that dramatically based on historic use. We're not using that much as far as I can see. And so, that's another one that I would, uh, like to see you come back with a number rather than me make a proposed cut.
Counselor, who's the person, what one was that again?
That's item, uh, E six, which is Water Service Upgrade Program. It's where we work with the homeowners and able to give them, um, a rebate for upgrading their services at a, at a time when they're doing reconstruction or something, I guess. A grant and aid type program. But we've only used five hundred dollars out of a thirty thousand dollar budget.
So, one person to cut with Angela.
Yeah, I mean.
Any other questions?
Boy, I, I just wanna speak to that one. I, the only reason I even remotely knew about that when we did the water line to our house was because of the contractor doing our concrete. So, this is a program that's out there and is available for use, but I don't think it's, I mean, known at all. And I would, I would, I would recommend that we not reduce this and take more advantage of public education. Let people know because I think it's more important that we get water lines and water service, um, improved throughout the community. And this helps homeowners do that.
Yeah, and, and the water department works with, anytime that anybody works in the street, the water department's working with them. Based on that, they should know that this program is available. So, I, I, and, and some, and not every water system needs to be upgraded. Some of them are just fine and just doing something in regards to that. So, I, again, I just, I wanna leave it to the department, but really take a, a good look at that and see if the thirty thousand dollars is really necessary. You, you're working in a deficit now and I'd hate to put a placeholder in or over-budget something and then go back and ask for rates. Like, that, it just doesn't feel right to me, so, um, it's one of those things that I, I worry about. And, um, as we're going through that, E seven is the backflow preventers. And again, I know that we asked you to get into this budget cycle a little bit earlier, so maybe some of the forecasts aren't exactly right. But in there, you have ten thousand budget for the backflow preventer program and there's been no activity in regards to the, uh, September, um, document that shows usage. And, uh, if.
No, that's, uh, certainly true. This is, uh, for, uh, commercial installations that, uh, have older sprinkler systems that just have a single check. You know, we make the program available, uh, the, uh, people that install sprinklers are aware of it. And we, uh, try to remind them because, you know, throughout the community, there are, uh, substandard, uh, sprinkler installations. And the unfortunate part is with just a single check, as you know, when you put, uh, a sprinkler system together, you test it, it's wet and the interior of the pipe afterwards is really rusty. And if your check, uh, doesn't hold and we drop the pressure in the street, we're gonna put some pretty ugly water, uh, back into, uh, people's homes. But you're right, there are certain places where there's only a single check and the property owner's just not interested. You know, e- even offering them a carrot, uh, just doesn't make any difference.
That's unfortunate. But, uh, again, that's all I'm looking at is usage and whether or not the programs are viable and if we really need to be, be going there, so.
Yeah, it's true, there's, uh, with the exception of the initial flurry, uh, where we got quite a few of them changed, uh, the last few years, which has been, uh, I won't say no interest, but, uh, uh, the remaining ones are just not interested.
So, if you could look at those, John, and talk to your staff about them and see if there's a way that we can reduce some of those costs if they're not really being utilized or there, there's not a demand anymore, I appreciate that.
I can certainly do that. And if, in the future, you know. I can certainly do that. And if, in the future, you know, business, uh, picks up, we'll certainly...
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Bob, before we close?
Uh, I think that's all I got.
What I'd like to do is since we got through the whole thing and we just have some things coming from Carl, and Carl wasn't sure he could make it next, this Monday, I was wondering if you guys would like to switch it to our next one to be either the 10th or the 12th? I think we just need one more meeting to do, um, maybe make some motions on, um, water stuff, um, and electric. But, um, does anybody have a problem with Monday or Wednesday?
Uh, I think that, Andy, we have a CEPA meeting.
13th.
13th, okay.
Let's make it Monday.
Yeah.
Let's make it Monday. So instead of this Monday, it's going to be the following Monday. On the 10th, 10th of, um, November.
And are we at this point holding the 12th as a last, as the last ditch or canceling that?
Well, if we get everything done on the 10th, we'll be fine. Otherwise, we...
So we're just holding that as a...
Yeah. And Carl, you got your list of things to get back to us with?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Mayor Council Comments. Judy?
No comments.
Deanne? Matt?
I'd just like to thank the staff for preparing the budget. Uh, this is the first year they've had to do this one ahead of time. I really appreciate it. And I think it's given us the opportunity to look through a little, uh, more in a deeper detail.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank staff. It's, uh, very well put together. I appreciate, uh, Carl and Bob's job of making those first cuts on that and bringing the reserves back into position where, uh, it's more palatable. Um, I just got back, uh, tonight from Citco where they had an energy conference. It was well-attended by all the southeast communities. Andy did a wonderful job of presenting for the city of Ketchikan and talking about our, our local, uh, utilities. Um, and we've been talking about Whitman and one of the outstanding comments that came out of that is if you're going to build a project and you're not displacing diesel, it's probably not a viable project at this particular point in time. Uh, and so it, it's all about timing and what they, they related that to. So Whitman will have its time in the future. I don't doubt that. But again, like Carl and Andy, there are times when we're just not gonna, it's not feasible to run the project. And, uh, there's nothing, um, as we can see, they talked about all the, um, trends in, in water management and inflows and what we, uh, what we found out, there was no, uh, normal or, or standard. It, it's all over the place. So, uh, it was a good conference. Well done.
Dave? KJ?
This is hard.
Oh, yeah. I, I wanted two things. Um, I wanted to also say, I already like this process. I think better. I appreciate the staff doing next to, um, getting the work and getting it done to us, um, sooner. I think it'll take a lot of stress off us at the end of November when we jump into the city. We won't have KPU hopefully hanging over our head. We'll be done with it. And then, um, so I thank everybody for their work. Um, tell everybody to have a safe Halloween tomorrow. And I appreciate you guys all showing up. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
To adjourn.